Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to Kent County Board of Commissioners' monthly, bimonthly meeting. Today is Thursday, October 26, 2017. Our time is 8:30 a.m. We'll begin today with roll call.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Antor.
Here.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Here.
Commissioners Breevy.
Here.
Bulkowski.
Present.
Hennessy.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Corndite.
Present.
Mast.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Skaggs.
Here.
Steck.
Here.
Talan.
Vonk.
Here.
Voorhees.
Present.
Womack.
Present.
Chair Saulfeld.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 present, one absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. We will then move on to our invocation and pledge, and I will call on Commissioner Ponstein to lead us in those.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. This platform here sometimes comes under criticism from the public, you know, why we have invocations. I think each county commissioner has leeway to do what he sees fit and maybe a message that he wants to get out. It's also the podium that public comment comes from. And a lot of times, we hear things from the public that sometimes are unsettling. And the past couple of months, we've heard, you know, a very pointed discussion on what abortions are. So, you know, that may make some of you uncomfortable. It should be no surprise to anyone that I am pro-life. I mean, all that stuff I've heard before. But as a pro-life person, you also have to realize that there is responsibility on the other end. And when someone does make a choice to bring that baby to term, that there's resources available in our community. And today, I've asked CEO Jim Sprague of the Presidency Resource Commit Center to give my invocation for me today.
Thank you, Commissioner. First, a personal note, I recognize that in a public assembly such as this, it's likely that there's a diversity of religious and denominational backgrounds and preferences that exists among us. So for this reason, I want to clarify that the prayer I will offer this morning will be to be directed to the Father God of the Old Testament, and it will be offered to Him in the New Testament name of Jesus Christ, His Son, sent by the Father to redeem this planet more than 2,000 years ago. Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the fantastic gift you gave each one of us when you woke us up this morning. Please forgive us if we ever take this gift of life for granted. As we gather today, we're reminded that many in our community are sick and infirmed and clinging to life itself. Let us instead be grateful each morning that you have placed breath in our lungs and a heartbeat in our chest, and through your Son, we are sustained. And not only have you given us physical life, you also offer us eternal life in Jesus Christ. We thank you too that we are fearfully and wonderfully made, that you knit us together in our mother's womb. And we thank you that we, the crowning jewels of all that you have created, bear your very image. Lord, today, I pray your blessing on these women and men who have assembled to do the business of governance and civil service. Lord, would you bless them for their commitment? Give them the wisdom of King Solomon as they care for this community, and let them serve joyfully as they are led by your Holy Spirit. In Proverbs 11:11, your word says to us that it's through the blessing of the upright a city is exalted. Lord God, may the Kent County Commissioners be found upright in your eyes, and thus usher in your blessings on Grand Rapids, along with every other city, town, village, and crossroad in their quarter. Finally, Lord God, may this group be marked by its unquestionable integrity, just decision-making, and the sagely stewardship of all that is entrusted to them. And we dare to approach you, a holy God, only because as your children, you bid us come. So we boldly implore you only in the strong and mighty name of Jesus Christ, the name at which every knee will bow and every tongue confess his lordship over heaven and earth. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein. Excuse me. Mr. Sprague, thank you. We now have a special order of business, Agenda Item Number 5, 15-minute presentation from Lance Werner regarding the Kent District Library. Good morning, and welcome, Lance. Again, welcome again.
Thank you. It's so wonderful to be with you this morning. I have good news. It won't be 15 minutes.
Excellent.
I want to thank you all for your support of the library in 2016. 2016 was a great year for us. Circulation's up over 30 percent. A bit of good news because of a generous donation from the Steelcase Foundation. The bookmobile's coming back after a decades-long hiatus. This will enable us to provide better service in rural areas and in some of the schools in the local area. I'm also happy to report that we are going to be opening a branch in partnership with Kellogg'sville High School. I don't know how much you know about that area, but it's very densely populated. I know that there are some transportation issues. This branch will enable a lot of the folks that live in those neighborhoods to walk right to the library, participate in summer reading, and offer a stronger program. Bless you.
Thank you.
And that kind of sums it up for me. I want to thank you again for all of your support, and I want to introduce Shirley Burisma, who is our Region 6 representative on the board and well-known to everybody in the county, the state, and even the nation.
Good morning.
Hello. Good morning. Hello, Honorable County Commissioners. Yes, I have been a trustee 33 years, and it's an honor and a privilege to be here to meet with you. I am filling in for our Board Chair, who is on a business trip. And I just felt it was time to come back and see all you people. And so it's an honor to be here. I'm not going to take 15 minutes either, but I will take longer than Lance. The KDL has partnered with the Gerald R. Ford International Airport to bring free books to travelers on the go. I trust many of you have seen this setup out there. I enjoy sitting there, watching people walk up there. And do I dare take one? Do I dare put it in my bag and get on the plane? But then when they get back, they also bring books back, maybe not even the same one they took. So it's been a real success. And every morning, we have staff that go out and fill it. It's just one of our most popular programs. More than 10,000 books were delivered to the airport in 2016. Our library for the blind and physically handicapped was pleased to welcome a group of disability rights representatives from eight Middle Eastern, Northern African countries. They first heard about our program through a Disabilities Advocates of Kent County Award we received in 2015. This past year, we sent 400 books to troops in the Middle East. Our contributions to the 182nd Field Artillery Regiment more than doubled its library, prompting troops to make new shelves. Engaging with Kent County students is also a top priority. Due to close partnerships with our schools around the county, more than 59,000 students attended KDL programs such as science labs, sports camps, literary talks. 250 books were given to kids on nine school buses in Kennewah Hills. At first, there was some question what that would do if it was meant to quiet the students, and yes, it did. And the bus drivers now really appreciate another quieter commute time to enrich young minds while she's doing it or he's doing it. Senior citizens continue to be at the core of KDL's outreach efforts, with outreach at various senior living facilities in our communities. In fact, 2,635 seniors attended KDL programs last year. This is all 2016. Now, I am extending an invitation to each and every one of you to visit our service center out on West River Road. I don't know if any of you have been there. If not, it's time to show up. In our lobby, we have huge cases, like when you walk into a high school and you see all these trophies and awards that they have gotten. Well, we have that also at KDL. And because of six years ago, we had probably the finest director in the state come to KDL, and that's why we're growing and expanding and doing what we're doing in several corners. More libraries want to come on board. We're just thrilled to death, and all because of our new director, Lance Werner. So in the last year alone, and this is 2017, but it happened before that, he has received two special awards, big awards. The last one being last week at the Michigan Library Association, he received the Director of the Year Award. Earlier in June, he received a national award. So we're really blessed to have his leadership and forward movement, and we're now the second largest library in the state. Our card count is second to none for 400,000 residents. So I invite you to come out and look at our trophy cases, and you will see at least a half a dozen that Lance alone has garnered. And so I invite you to please come out and take part in that and visit our libraries. You will be amazed at the changes and the forward thinking that we're doing in our libraries, you know, like circ desks and a few other things that have changed around. And for an old senior citizen, it's easy to say, "We didn't use to do it that way." But it's all for the good of the cause. So please come on out and see us. And thanks again for letting us make our presentation, and we look forward to returning next year to report on this year. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you, Shirley, and thank you, Lance. We have time for a few questions, if anybody has questions. Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to add what a fabulous summer reading program you have. The success of that continues to build. It is for kids. It is for adults. It is just a wonderful addition that KDL has had. I'm a big fan. I always do it. I also am a huge library fan, have been since I showed up into this world. fondest memories ever have been at libraries. And Lance wouldn't know in the box if he was in a box, because there is just no boundaries for the creativity and what he brings to KDL. And putting my day job hat on, as Dave Bulkowski sometimes does, I have an opportunity to meet with other library directors around the state. And I assure you, they all point to KDL as the leader. They look to the website. They look to what Lance is creating and doing. It is a wonderful asset for our community. And I'm going to go one step further to encourage my fellow commissioners to go into their pocketbooks and considering contributing personally to KDL to help the cause, to help keep this going. I do. I'm on the Donors Society page. So doing what we can to help them, I think, really matters. So I just wanted to call your attention to the back of this book and to give some thought to next year, your name being there too. Thank you.
We have also adopted a library in Texas, Lord Arthur Library, and we have pledged 50,000 books, which is what they lost. So we, not only at KDL, but around the state, have let it be known that we're accepting. We will do all the shipping and sending down. It's not going to open until next March because of the heavy, heavy damage. So you made me think of that when you mentioned donating. So that is another plus for KDL. Our HR director thought of, and it's going gangbusters. So thank you again.
Okay, Commissioner Mast.
Thank you, Chair. Shirley or Lance, you know, you're talking about the various new places you have, and I don't know whether this is an appropriate question or not, but what about our incarcerated members of Kent County at the Kent County Jail? Do they have any opportunity to somehow check out books or get books? I know they're, you know, that's a 300, 400 population that probably could stand to read some.
We've reached out to the Kent County Jail, and we've asked if we can stick a little free library there so they, you know, the inmates have something to do. And so we're kind of waiting to see if they'll reach back. We're very interested in that as well. We're also interested, and we're in the very early stages of trying to get some programming together around skilled trades to help those that have been formerly incarcerated and a number of other groups in the area, because we feel like skilled trades are hugely important. And we also recognize that there's a lot of STEAM learning involved with skilled trades. There's a lot of math. There's a lot of science, and there's a lot of precision necessary. And so we can buttress our STEAM efforts and then work on skilled trades. So we have our eye on it. I think it's a great question. Thank you.
Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. Two points, just to piggyback what Diane was saying. My three-year-old grandson, for his third birthday, the party was going to be on a Saturday. His birthday was during the week. So his mom said, "What would you like to do? Can we go to the library, Mommy?" And I thought, "Oh, my goodness." That's, I mean, those are just words that make you just so excited. And so, obviously, yeah, that was an easy one to say, "Sure, we will go there." He loves going because of the programs that are there. But my other question is, around, at least where I'm living in Kentwood, we're seeing more and more of those, what they're calling them, the travel libraries.
The little free libraries?
Yeah. Now, was this out of, I know one of the persons in one neighborhood, she used to work at KDL. She started it, but I don't know if she started it because of you.
It's possible. We have 18.
Okay.
Little free libraries on the county, and we are currently in discussions with actually a seniors professional group to actually build more. You know, it's not our library. It's your library. And we want to make sure that everybody has as much access as possible. And our goal is to lift people up and transform lives. And all of us are public servants, and anything we can do, you know, to further that is what we're all about.
It's fabulous. I mean, you walk and you see this, and it's just one more way of letting whomever you're with who's younger, because they don't have the memories that I have. You know, it was a big excitement to go to the library, and it still is for many. But, you know, we're so into our electronics, and the fact that you can take a walk and you're doing exercise, and there you see a place where you can get a book, I just think it's fabulous. So whoseever idea it was, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bulkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, with my day job hat, real quick, just to say, we do greatly appreciate our partnership with Kent District Library. And the highlight publicly is our ADA celebration at the Kentwood Branch, and nothing but welcomed and supported by all the staff out there. It's great to be hanging out in Kentwood for that. With my commission hat on, any news on or updates about the negotiations with Grand Rapids Public Library to work towards a seamless system?
So there's been a bit of news coverage, as I'm sure you've all seen, with Grand Rapids. Was that your question?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't see any coverage. Sorry.
No, no, no. It's quite all right. We have a long history of working with other libraries in a variety of different capacities, and we stand ready to work with Grand Rapids as much as we can, when we can. Right now, we currently have the ability to issue Grand Rapids library cards to Grand Rapids residents when they come into the KDL branch, which enables them to use the facility and check things out as a KDL cardholder would. And they can issue our cards, but we welcome, you know, any opportunity to do something more.
But like in the old days that Shirley referenced, which was just a few years ago, I used to be able to go on the KDL website and actually sign out books and get them dropped off at the East Grand Rapids Branch, since that far-off city of East Grand Rapids touches my backyard. So are we getting closer to that kind of?
We still have some tech, slowly but surely we are, but we still have some technical problems, and I don't see that occurring anytime in the near future. Hopefully, sometime in the next year, we're working with our ILS vendor, trying to get on, I don't know as much of technical goblin goo, but what I'm told is that it's on its way, but it's, you know, like a glacier moving down the mountainside.
Okay. And yeah, my question isn't related to any of the other reporting.
Yeah.
This is just my annual question to you, so I'm still waiting for the good old days when we just could use both libraries like we were neighbors.
We are too.
So, okay, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, time for a couple more questions. Commissioner Vonk.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I was just taking a tour yesterday at the Gerald R. Ford, and I saw the library books there. And Chair Morgan's going to get you a nicer presentation than you have today. I can guarantee that. And then the second question, since you provide books to our servicemen and women, I wonder if you're supporting the Gerald R. Ford Aircraft Carrier and if it will have some space on that ship as well.
No, but we'd love to. And back to the 182nd, the reason why that all happened is somebody who was a cardholder from the city of Wyoming who was serving overseas called us up, and he said, "You know, our library on base is dismal, and the troops like to read. It takes their mind off of everything else, and is there anything you can do to help us?" Well, we'll help our folks wherever they're at. And so we did. And so, I mean, if there was an opportunity for us to do something with the Gerald R. Ford Aircraft Carrier, that'd be remarkable. If you know somebody, give them my card. That'd be wonderful.
Our Chair, Morgan, can make it happen.
No pressure.
All right, Ms. Hennessy.
I was going to ask a question similar to Commissioner Bulkowski in terms of what collaborations you do have going on with the Grand Rapids Public Library system. But I have used your traveler system at the airport. I've taken the book, read it on vacation, and returned it. It's very nice.
That's wonderful.
It's one way in which I can participate with the District Library.
Well, again, we're ready to do whatever we can, and, you know, we have a pretty good relationship with Grand Rapids Public Library. Anything we do to engage in something more profound, we'll definitely do that. And I'm glad that you are using the books at the airport. We like to go on vacation with everybody. And so you take one of those books, and you're taking KDL on vacation with you.
Okay. Well, Shirley, Lance, thank you very much for the presentation this morning. Lance, congratulations on those awards that were noted, Director of the Year. That's very impressive.
Thank you, sir.
And I think well deserved. So thank you, and best wishes going forward here.
Thank you all so much. We'll see you next year. Take care.
Okay, we'll move next to Agenda Item 6, which is public comment. If anybody has public comment, please come forward. You have three minutes to state your name and address. There's a familiar face. Good morning, Counselor.
My name is Dan Opoff. I live in Grand Rapids Township, 378 Saddleback Drive. As the chairman mentioned, some of you know me. Those that don't, I was Kent County Corporate Counsel until March of 2014, when I left for other pastures. One of those pastures is a passion of mine right now, and it's veterans. I am a veteran, and so I helped work to get your Veterans' Millet passed in 2014 with Commissioner Mast and a number of other folks. And so this morning, what I wanted to do was associate this face with your Veterans' Millet or your Veterans' Court Agenda Item. I have volunteered at the Veterans' Court. I'm a mentor there. It's been up and running for about two years, two and a half years. It's a very good program. I know Commissioner Womack has been out there. Commissioner Mast has been out there for hearings. I encourage all of you to think about coming out. This is truly a great investment for your Veterans' Millet, and I thank you for the support that you give and the support that came from staff to make the Agenda Item that's in front of you appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time and for allowing us to be here today. I'm Stephanie Summer, Medical Examiner Liaison for Gift of Life Michigan. This is my colleague, Allison Gillum, and you probably know Dr. Steve Cole, your Chief Medical Examiner. We're here on behalf of Gift of Life Michigan and our partner, Eversight, to present the 2017 Donation Champion Award to Dr. Cole and Dr. Start and the Office of the Medical Examiner in Kent County. This award is to recognize you, Dr. Cole, and your team for exemplary work to save and improve lives through organ, eye, and tissue donation. It's to honor you for advocating for the donors and families that we collectively serve through your extraordinary dedication and daily collaboration. It's my understanding that today, coincidentally, the Board is also considering the acceptance of a grant from Gift of Life Michigan for the Medical Examiner's Office to purchase iPads for the MEIs or Medical Examiner investigators. We're glad that Gift of Life can give back and hopefully make the difficult work that the Medical Examiner Office does every day a little easier. When an individual dies outside of a hospital, MDI Log, the case management software used by the Kent County ME Office, makes appropriate referrals automatically to Gift of Life when the investigator saves his or her report. But receiving the referral is just the beginning. Tissue donation must occur within 24 hours of death, and orchestrating the donation process and the autopsy can be challenging and sometimes frustrating a little bit. be challenging and sometimes frustrating a little bit. Dr. Cole and Dr. Start and their entire team truly go above and beyond to make sure donation happens. As a result, more Kent County citizens are able to donate and Gift of Life and Eversight are able to honor the donation decision and meet the needs of recipients by recovering more organs and tissues for transplant. I doubt Dr. Cole and Dr. Start consider themselves champions, but they are. Over the years, facilitating donation has become part of their routine. It's not viewed as something extra or inconvenient. It's an ingrained part of their public service 24/7/365 and it's appreciated by Gift of Life, by donors, donor families, and recipients. Kent is a giving county. People want to donate. Honoring this wouldn't be possible without our partnership and the Kent County Medical Examiner's commitment to making donation happen. For that, we're extremely grateful. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts and present to you the 2017 Donation Champion Award.
Well, thank you very much. It has been a fruitful cooperative effort between our office and Gift of Life and we look forward to many more years of cooperation and hopefully we will continue to be number one in the state, right, as we are number one county as far as providing donors for them. And we'll try to keep that up.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Congratulations. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Please state your name and address.
Daniel Scott, 1204 Hovey Southwest. This will probably be my last time appearing before you, at least for a time. I want to express my most sincere appreciation and gratefulness for allowing me to share about this vision and passion we have to make Kent County a sanctuary refuge county for the unwanted and the unborn. Once again, if any of you ever want to pass along to me prayer requests, whether it be personal, family, or business or otherwise, I and our ministry would be happy to intercede for you. But thank you for letting me to share, allowing me to share these last five times. And, yeah, they are the most vulnerable and discriminated against members of our society, the unborn. I would strongly encourage you to continue to try to do all you can to speak up for them in your God-given positions of authority. If you were here last time, Chairman Sawfeld publicly rebuked me. Don't just kidding. I accept that, his wisdom and advice. But he also has suggested that we have just a time to invite all of you and anyone else under the sound of my voice to come to one of our churches. And I would just share the remainder information that I wanted to share here. So, we conversed about ten days ago and he suggested, and I have flyers, that will have all the information, including a map on the back. This church that we would invite you to is 755 Butterworth Southwest, right near the corner of Stray and Butterworth. And I'm just gonna share, like I said, the remaining information I have not had a chance to share here. Chairman Sawfeld has already agreed to come. In fact, we picked this date according to his schedule and he explained to me that you're all very busy, I understand that, but you're all invited. And again, I thank you for allowing me to share and God bless you all.
Thank you. Thank you for respecting our rules. Is there any other public comment this morning? I'm seeing none, so we will move then to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is our Consent Agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Ponstein. Support by Commissioner Corndyke. Are there any questions or comments on this motion? I see none. Madam Clerk, this is a roll call vote.
On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Breevy.
Yes.
Wolkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Tallon. Vonk.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Sawfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen ayes, zero nays. The motion is adopted. The consent agenda passes.
Thank you. We move then to Agenda Item Number Eight, which are resolutions. We have five of them today. All of them are non-roll call votes. For the first one, I will call on Commissioner Mast.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chair. I'm going to ask that we, that someone else do this resolution. I think as some of you know, I am a member, I was, I have been a member of the Kentwood Board of Review. And there was just a recent Michigan Association of Counties attorney that ruled that's a conflict of interest, having a county commissioner be on a board review. So, I, this is a rather innocuous resolution, but I think to be safe, I'm going, I would like to have someone else do it and then I'm just going to refrain from voting on it.
Very well. Commissioner John.
I no longer am gonna serve on that board. So, but I think this takes place of stuff that I did as a board of review.
I'd like to move Resolution 10261780 to 2017 Appropriation and Report Bureau of Equalization. Support.
And support by Commissioner Breevy. Any questions or comments on this item? I see none. This is not a roll call vote, so all in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? One extension. Motion passes. We move then to our second resolution and I will call on Commissioner Womack.
Thank you very much. I move for the Resolution of Mental Health Implementation Grant with the Circuit Court to be adopted.
Support? Support by Commissioner Mast. Are there questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick comment and I just, the more and more we are learning and reading of the teen, early twenty emotional state of our younger persons and the suicide rates and those things, I'm just very pleased to be part of a group that is willing to realize that this is something to be taken very seriously. And hopefully we can become leaders in defending, or not defending, sorry, but in acknowledging that this is a very real part of our community and it's not a problem, if you will, that's just plain and going to go away. So, just that kind of.
Thank you. Any other? Commissioner Womack.
I just wanna send a thanks out to Circuit Judge Joseph Rossi, Network 180, our Kent County Sheriff's Department and Office, Prosecutor's Office, for their work and working together to help implement this mental health court. I went to many court cases where I saw people that I felt were not mentally fit to be in court representing themselves sometimes. And I think this is really going to help bring us some true justice for the public and have people sent where they can get help. So, I just wanna thank all of those different departments for working together on this.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Stat?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with my colleagues that this is an important piece of the puzzle as we move forward and redefine how we're gonna serve this population. This is, the development is past due, so I'm looking forward to what we're able to accomplish with it.
Okay. I had, just one thing I wanted to add. Circuit Court Judge Rossi contacted me last night, apologized for not being here today. He said he otherwise would have liked to have been here, but his socket did not permit him to. And just noted that mental health issues are often one of the biggest contributing factors in recidivism and that keeping, this effort that we're putting in place should help keep those suffering out of the justice system and a leading strain on courts and jails. And so I think this is certainly a good effort and agree with Judge Rossi's comments. And with that, we will call the question. This is not a roll call vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We then move to the third resolution and I will call on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 82, the Gift of Life Foundation iPad Program Grant from the medical, to the Medical Examiner's Office.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Breevy. Questions or comments on this matter? I see none. This is not a roll call vote, so all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We move to our fourth resolution and I will call on Commissioner Mast.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 83, which is the final action taken to authorize some money from our Veterans' Millet towards the Wyoming District Court 62A Veterans Court Treatment Court. I move that resolution.
Support.
Support by Vice Chair Bolter. Questions or comments on this matter and this resolution should say? Commissioner Wolkowski?
Yeah, similar to the mental health court, it's great to see this continuing to grow and move forward. I've had the opportunity to work with a veteran that went through this. And again, it really helps a person get their life together. They still atone for their transgressions and again, it's just very, very positive. So, it's, and it saves all of us time, energy, other resources. So, this is, this is very, very positive.
Commissioner Womack?
I also had a chance to visit the Veterans' Court and just the appreciation of our veterans who are going to court and them finding out that there are people in this community and officials that do care about them and do respect and recognize their service to our country. And I just wanted to add that the Veterans' Court, not only did they have a judge that was able to judge this and look more closely into these incidents, they have a lot of support staffs and other services that are connected with them. And it's just a great thing that's happening. I would urge other Commissioners to get a chance to visit the Veterans' Court to see the great things that are going on with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Corndyke?
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to also thank Dan Opoff for all his work in regards to this resolution. I know he's been very involved and I've actually sent him a referral and very happy with the results. So, thank you, Dan, for all your work for our veterans. Appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? I see none. Not, this is not a roll call vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We move to our final resolution and I will call on Commissioner Corndyke.
Thank you, Chair Sawfeld. I would like to move our final resolution, number 84 of today's date, for a Department of Health and Human Services Board Appointment, or as, should I say, reappointment of Bruce McCoy.
Support.
Support by Vice Chair Bolter. Questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Corndyke?
Bruce is in the room. Maybe he could stand up so everyone can see who we are reappointing to our board. Thank you for coming, Bruce.
Thank you for your service. Any other questions or comments? I have not seen any. This is not a roll call vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We move to Agenda Item Nine, which is Public Comment. Is there any additional public comment this morning? This is a one-minute public comment period. I see none. So, we will move to Reports, which is Item 10. Are there any reports by Commissioners this morning? We'll start with Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to report that we're gonna be dedicating the Veterans' Welcome Center out at the airport. I think it's November 8th. And the reason why it's November 8th is because Spartan Ash is sponsoring that and I guess all their executives will be in town during that day. So, it's invite only, but another dedication going on at the airport. So, I'll report on how it goes.
Okay. Commissioner Breevy?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to give a brief update on the LED Task Force. We are gonna be scheduling a couple of community events in November and those dates will be announced and also the location to just present some of our recommendations and get some community feedback before our final report.
Thank you. Any other reports? I don't see any, so we will move to Agenda Item 11, which is Miscellaneous. Any Miscellaneous this morning? Commissioner Jones?
I have one, Chair. Thank you very much. I had contact from the DNR that there was a deer wasting case that was found in the northern area of Kent County. So, just something to be aware of and that they're on top of it. And I think that that's a great key to the communication. I know I wasn't the only communicator, only Commissioner or only elected official who was contacted on this. And it's just important to be aware of that and that the DNR is on top of that piece.
And I believe that was actually in Montholme County, right? Real close to the border of Kent County. And I think we had a second one now. Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Sawfeld. I wanted to thank again the person that came for invocation this morning, Jim Sprague. You know, life's important and it's not just at the beginning, which the pregnancy resource addresses, but you only have to turn the TV on. You know, we've got new stories on human trafficking that are happening right here in Kent County. We're no different than any other county when it comes to opioid deaths, veterans suicides, general public suicides in general, you know, elder abuse, elder care, assisted suicide, you name it. And it's something that I've always valued from conception to death is that life is precious and it touches not just the beginning, but several aspects. So, Jim didn't want to speak anything about his organization. If anyone else wants to know anymore about it, I'm gonna drop their annual report on and you can read for yourself what they believe in and what they do. And if you see fit, and I know my mailbox is full of fundraisers and they're all good causes. I can't contribute to all of them, but there are certain ones that mean a lot to me. There's also a fundraiser for them. If you're interested, I'll even envelope in your box with that information. Second of all, the Michigan Association of County Board of Directors meeting's been moved up to November 7th. Not that any of you would like to come, but if you do, we've been told that we get the Governor of the State of Michigan for 45 minutes to take questions from the Board. So, if there's anything in the county, I know we have our legislative priorities, but if anything has come up, I'm going to be probably between me and Roger away from them. So, I just thought I'd pass that along.
Good. Thank you. Commissioner Wolkowski?
Speaking of November 7th, before you head to the MAC Board Meeting, don't forget to vote. It is election day. If you have need for advice on how to vote for any local milletages, please see me. I don't know if you've seen my button, but we'll leave it at that. Thank you all. Remember to vote November 7th. Unfortunately, your vote will have a lot of impact because, you know, there'll be unfortunately a small turnout because it's just not much on the ballot. So, go have your voice heard strong. Thank you.
Commissioner Melton?
Thank you, Chair. On the flip side of what Commissioner Ponstein just said, I was at a Gaila fundraiser for Caesar Chavez, if I'm saying that correctly, I hope, for the student grants. And for me, I mean, my passion is students. There is nothing more exciting, but also I just find it very calming to see what our young persons are accomplishing. And although you can certainly take away that there's so many negatives, when I see these students who are accomplishing so much in today's world, you know what, when I get old and I don't really know necessarily who I am anymore, I know that I will be in good hands because these students were absolutely, positively amazing. And it was a thrill to be there. It was my first time. I hope it's not my last time because they just all come with such excitement and so many, I mean, you know, this long of accomplishments under their name already at such a young age. So, there are good things going on out in our county.
Thank you.
many, I mean, you know, this long of accomplishments under their name already at such a young age. So, there are good things going on out in our county.
Thank you. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to dovetail a little bit on what Commissioner Jones indicated. I've actually been on the phone with the DNR Wildlife and Disease Lab down in East Lansing. The problem, they're on top of it, but they need a lot of help because they don't have the manpower right now to properly check all these deer. What they're looking for is if you see anybody in your area, see any deer that are wandering around, the deer act like you get real close to them, almost like they don't fear humans anymore. A lot of times, that's one of the last effects of a deer before they get the wasting disease. And it is always fatal. We can't get rid of it. It's probably in every county in the state right now. They just haven't, that's what we're going to end up with. They're trying to control it, but it's really important to let the DNR officials know when you have a deer like that so they can come out and test it. Thank you.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I want to just thank Chair Sawfeld for the time he took with Pastor Dan and making sure that public comment, a person did have the right to bring to us the issues that they faced, and, but you also talked to him about recurring issues and just bringing that to a conclusion that was respected by Pastor Dan, someone in our community who wanted to voice his opinion. So, thank you for the time you took on that. I also want to thank Commissioner Poynstein on something he said about the children that are born, that we have to have resources for them. When my mother became pregnant with me, Commissioner Poynstein, she was under 15 years old in Arkansas, and family members in the community told her she should get an abortion. There just wasn't enough money to go along, go around, so she ran away to Chicago. When she went to Chicago, she was also told she should get an abortion. She heard about one uncle that was in Grand Rapids, only family member that was here because of a job that brought him to Muskegon, then he found one in Grand Rapids. So, she ran away from Chicago because everybody was telling her she should get an abortion. And she always tells me that when she got to Grand Rapids, more people started telling her, well, we have a baby, these resources are here, and she felt this was the most resourceful, supportive city that she had been to. And that's why she ended up having me here at Blodgett Hospital, and our family has grown here now. I mean, we have a large population of my family. And my mother was the first to come here just because how resourceful this city is. So, when you mentioned the resources for those children that are born, I could tell you, I am a product of the love and generosity and support that Grand Rapids here has for those children that are born. So, you definitely touched me with your presentation this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Compelling. Any other miscellaneous this morning? I see none. I don't have anything, so we will move next to Agenda Item 12, which is one of our rare closed sessions where we will be discussing collective bargaining strategy. And as it relates to this, I will call on Vice Chair Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to meet in closed session in accordance with MCL 15.268C to develop a strategic course of action relative to the county's negotiations with multiple unions' collective bargaining agreements.
Support. Support by Commissioner Corndyke. All in, I'm, let's see, I guess, I'm sorry, this is a roll call vote, so I will call on Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to move into closed session, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Breevy.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Talan.
Vonck.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Sawfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. We may move to closed session.
Thank you. We will now just empty our chambers and in a moment, you're starting a closed session.